Do you want me to pledge an allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, condescension under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang. Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Karen Adam.
Karen Berry.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 27, 2011?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, it was second by Councilmember Stites, it changes to the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries 7-0 with Councilmember Stites abstaining.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak on any item not on the agenda. Please step forward if you'd like to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight to the podium and spell your last name for the record and please state your city and/or your address.
Good evening. My name is Bud Starker and I live at 3019 Eaton Street in the great city of Wheatridge. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bud Starker and I come before you tonight to announce my candidacy for the Wheatridge City Council from District 1. I've lived in the same house in Wheatridge for the past 35 years, since 1976, and I have watched our city develop as a great place to live. I'm a small business owner, family man, and have been active in civic affairs my whole life. I believe Wheatridge is on the cusp of many exciting and promising developments which will continue to enhance the great quality of life we enjoy in this city. I look forward to meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council to gain a greater understanding of the challenges and opportunities we face as a city, as well as the opportunity to listen to the diverse and creative voices within our community. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else has stepped forward, please step forward under public comment. Please spell your last name for the record and state your city and/or your address.
Paula Hansen, H-A-N-S-E-N, and I live at 4240 Dudley. I'm a long time-from birth Wheatridge citizen and left for 20 years and came back to find a totally different Wheatridge where I live now. I used to run and play as a kid from Dover Street down to the creek and enjoy the wildlife. And now I can tell as we have grown, we have what neighbors around me have termed as wildlife management problems. So I'm here today to kind of ask if we could come up with some kind of a management program of our wildlife in the city as it has peaks and valleys due to too many numbers, too few numbers. In our frustration, we have photos of your mange foxes that are wandering and they're desperate, so they're sitting on our front porches. And of course, according, we have a law, don't feed the animals. You're kind of like going against people's ethical value system here. It's a conflict of don't feed them, but we can't do anything about it. In Wheatridge, we have apparently no management program. So I guess that's what the neighbors and I that live around me, our request is, could you come up with some way that other than when we put in six calls in the same hour about mange foxes that look very emaciated on our front porches, there's nothing to be done other than let them starve, which is unacceptable to us. It seems we have done Googled about mange foxes and found out all kinds of pathology. When you have diseased animals, particularly in mammals, it just transfers to other animals. And sometimes it's endangered to people's domestic dogs if they... Granted, I found out that you can... Your animals have to lie down next to them and be close. We were finally given a trap that was the wrong size, so we did Googling on animal traps. I requested the budget for the Community Services Department, how much for labor costs, how much for materials cost. The neighbors around me were willing, if it's a tight budget, as we know with every place, we're willing to come up with the money for the right-sized traps. We were told by community service people, unless they're laying half-dead on your lawn, we can do nothing. If we can trap them, then we can humanely euthanize them, but we don't have any cages. I returned a cage today that was the size for a squirrel. So I have... And also this, the notes here talk about the proper way, simplistic things you could give to people, your officers, this is if you want to do it yourself. Here's a cage we can help you with. These are some ideas about baiting it. If you get it baited, give us a call and we'll humanely euthanize it. So that's our main concern. We'd like to know if we couldn't have some kind of a wildlife management that was written down. What can we do? What can we not do? When you call people on the phone instead of six calls and no response, because you have a little blurb that you give to the public that says, "This is what we can take care of, this is what we can't take care of, here's some ideas," just something... I think people, when they call, they want something given to them that they can say, "Oh, I can be helpful," other than, "Watch the mange fox sit on your front porch." So I don't know if you wish this, these pieces of information. We have a video that we took.
Would you mind giving that information to Mr. Goff and your contact information? Mr. Goff is right here, Mr. Goff.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Please give Mr. Goff your contact information, our city manager.
If you'd like to leave anything, you can. Okay. Here's your phone number or email. My name is Lloyd Levy and I live at 3275 Uppom Street. I'm a member of Wheatridge 2020 and I'm a volunteer advocate for them. And I'm here to invite you and everyone who's within reach to the next Live Local event at the Dairy Queen on Thursday. Wheatridge 2020, as you know, is a nonprofit dedicated to making Wheatridge vibrant and sustainable. And the idea for Live Local is to come together, to meet other folks, to support Wheatridge 2020, to support a local business, to get a good deal and maybe win a door prize. So the next event is this coming Thursday, July 14, at the Dairy Queen at 38th and Pierce from 7:00 to 9:00. DQ is giving buy-one-get-one Sundays and orange Juliases, and a portion of the proceeds will go to support Wheatridge 2020. Thanks. I hope to see you there. Oh, actually, I won't be able to make it because I'm going to be out of town, but you better.
Do we have anybody else for public comment? Please step forward on any item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go on to approval of the agenda. Under unanimous consent, does anybody have a problem with unanimous consent to add item 1A, which is Council Bill Number 15-2011, an ordinance temporary waiving the city's 2-cent sales tax within the boundaries of the Long's Peak Metro District? Any concerns on that? So that'll be added as item 1A. And then item 7 is a motion to go into executive session. Does anybody have a problem adding that with unanimous consent? So item 7 will be executive session. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item 1 is Council Bill 22-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember J.
Council Bill Number 22-2011, an ordinance approving the comprehensive rezoning of property along the Wadsworth corridor between the West 35th and West 45th avenues to the mixed-use commercial MUC Zone District, case number WZ-11-03. The Wadsworth corridor subarea plan adopted in 2007 and the envisioned Wheatridge comprehensive plan adopted in 2009 call for medium and high-density mixed-use redevelopment along the Wadsworth corridor between West 35th and West 45th avenues. Both plans envision a mixed-use town center with compact, pedestrian-friendly development on Wadsworth between West 38th and West 45th avenues. In September 2010, the city council adopted new mixed-use zone districts. One zone district, Mixed Use Commercial, MUC, was developed for primary commercial corridors like Wadsworth. The MUC zoning creates a streamlined development process and encourages pedestrian-friendly, medium, and high-density mixed-use development. In order to advance the city's goals of promoting mixed-use redevelopment on Wadsworth, the city initiated a comprehensive rezoning of properties along Wadsworth roughly between West 35th and West 45th avenues to the MUC district.
The city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
Yes, sir. Council Bill 22-2011 will be ordinance number 1496.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff presentation and please state your name and your position with the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Johnstone, Director of the Community Development Department. Pleased to be here this evening to have the public hearing for the Wadsworth corridor rezoning. We've been working on this for quite a while now, beginning with planning efforts that date back to 2007 with adoption of the Wadsworth corridor plan and, of course, the mixed-use zoning project, which has been going on for over two years as well. So we do have a presentation for you this evening. Sarah Showalter has been the project manager on the mixed-use zoning, as I think you all know, and she and I are going to kind of tag-team it here. And Sarah's going to kick it off by giving you a little bit of the history. I know you're fairly familiar with it in terms of some of the planning efforts that have occurred on Wadsworth and then a real snapshot of what the mixed-use commercial zoning looks like in terms of some of the substance of the zoning. And then I'll come back to the podium and just give a summary of some of the public process that we've been through to get to this point of being before you with a public hearing. So I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Please state your name for the record and your position with the city.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Showalter, Planner 2 in the Community Development Department. And tonight we're hearing case WZ-1103, which is a city-initiated rezoning of the Wadsworth corridor roughly between West 35th and 45th avenues to the mixed-use commercial zone district. This first slide shows the area that's proposed to be rezoned. It's outlined in blue. And the boundaries, which may appear a bit jagged, are drawn this way because they correspond with the existing urban renewal area on Wadsworth. The boundaries match that area because that is the same area that was exempted from density and height restrictions in our city charter in 2009. So only properties within that area would be able to take advantage of some of the higher building heights that are allowed in the proposed new zone district. I'd also point out that the reason why the property here at the southeast corner, all the way over to here, is in the urban renewal area. The reason why that's not included at this point is because it has already been rezoned to mixed-use commercial. And as Ken mentioned, we really see the proposed mixed-use commercial zoning as an important implementation step of some adopted plans that have been with the city for several years now. Two of the most important being the Wadsworth corridor subarea plan, which was adopted in 2007, as well as our comprehensive plan envisioned Wheatridge. The corridor plan really established a vision for Wadsworth being redeveloped with medium and high-density mixed-use development. And the comprehensive plan reinforced that vision. It established Wadsworth as one of five priority redevelopment areas in the city and it refined the vision a little bit by really trying to establish a mixed-use town center between, specifically between 38th and 44th within this rezoning area. And these are graphics from those two plans. On the left is the land use plan presented in the Wadsworth subarea plan. And pretty much anywhere you see this reddish-orange color here is medium-high-density mixed use, which covers almost exactly the proposed rezoning area. And then this is from our recently adopted comprehensive plan envisioned Wheatridge establishing the mixed-use town center on Wadsworth. So in many ways, the zoning that's on Wadsworth today doesn't really allow for the vision and those adopted plans to be implemented. The majority of properties, as you can see in this existing zoning map, have C1 or commercial 1 zoning, which is the reddish-pinkish color that you see in most of the area. There are a few properties that have a planned commercial development, which is what the gray represents. There's one neighborhood commercial property, one commercial 2 property, and a few RC or restricted commercial zone districts. I will note that everything within the proposed rezoning area is zoned commercially. There's no existing residential zones in this area. And as I mentioned, part of the reason that the city's been pursuing this rezoning is because that existing commercial zoning, really all of the commercial zone districts from C1, C2, and C do not allow for the implementation of the city's vision. It's very difficult to do mixed-use development under this existing zoning. Not only are there restrictions on residential uses, where it can be, how much residential you can have, residential uses are explicitly disallowed as a primary use. There's also a height restriction in the existing zoning of 35 feet for any building with residential in it. So if you wanted to do a mixed-use building with, for example, retail at the ground floor and residential above, it'd be very difficult to do that beyond just two stories. All of the commercial zoning allows a pretty wide range of commercial land uses, the C1 being the widest range, and that one property with C2 the widest. And then the restricted commercial, neighborhood commercial have slightly limited permitted uses when it comes to commercial. The proposed zoning, mixed-use commercial or MUC, also allows for a wide range of commercial uses. We recognize that Wadsworth is a major commercial corridor and want to be able to attract more quality commercial uses to the corridor. However, it is a big change in that it also allows for a wide range of residential uses. There's a few uses that are explicitly not allowed in this district, and that would be any kind of car repair or sales that has permanent outdoor display. Adult entertainment and pawnbrokers are also explicitly not allowed. There's also a set of uses that are conditional uses, which are allowed but require additional administrative review by staff, primarily to look at site plan and design for proposed use to address impacts on neighboring properties. Those uses include drive-through uses, gas stations, as well as wholesale. In terms of building height, the maximum is four stories for any single-use building or six stories for a mixed-use building. However, if any portion of a building is within 100 feet of a single or two-family home, unless it's separated by a major street, then that portion of the building that's within 100 feet of that residential property cannot exceed four stories. We also have other provisions for development occurring near existing low-density residential lots. We recognize, the zone district recognizes that it's important to protect existing residential neighborhoods that are close to the corridor. So when it comes to parking lots or drive-throughs that are immediately adjacent to a residential property, there are requirements for buffering and screening, and that includes a solid fence or wall that's at least six feet tall, as well as a landscape buffer that would include trees or shrubs, and that is six feet wide. There's also provisions when it comes to how far buildings can be, or how close they can be, to a property line that shares a property line with an existing low-density residential use. At the ground floor, we have at least a minimum requirement of 10 feet, and that would be for a one- or two-story building. And that 10 feet does have to be landscaped and planted with trees to help add to that level of buffering. And then as the building gets taller, an additional five extra feet are required per story, up to 20 feet total. And that's just at the ground floor. Then in addition to that, as you get above two stories, there's also a five-foot upper level step back. So between the upper level step backs and the ground floor step back, trying to preserve the quality of those adjacent residential uses. And finally, the mixed-use commercial zone district also includes design standards. In many ways, these design standards are similar to the architectural overlay that already applies to this portion of Wadsworth through Architectural and Site Design Manual. Essentially, we're trying to encourage quality development that has a nice architectural quality to it and is particularly urban and pedestrian-friendly in its design. So that includes requirements to have a minimum amount of windows or transparency at the ground floor, particularly for retail uses. Built-to requirements, which essentially encourage the building to be placed close to the street with parking behind or to the side. In terms of architecture of buildings, there's requirements about quality materials and variation in the facade and design of the building, so you don't have blank walls, and also screening for parking lots and drive-through uses that are adjacent to public spaces or public streets. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it back over to Ken.
Thanks, Sarah. Well, obviously, when you embark on a legislative city council-initiated rezoning, public outreach is critical. We are confident that we've had a good amount of it and want to go over that a little bit. Starting back with the Wadsworth Summit back in January in 2010, the mayor initiated that meeting, which really started the conversation with the public about what it would look like to, among other things, consider a legislative rezoning to these new mixed-use districts. Over the intervening nine months, we developed the new zoning districts, which include the mixed-use commercial district, which is proposed to be applied on the Wadsworth corridor. That, too, was a very public process and involved a real critical component, which was a task force of property owners, developers, bankers, and designers who kind of truth-tested our draft ordinance and, we believe, made it a much better product. So city council in September of 2010 adopted the new mixed-use districts, and then we embarked on the second step in the process, which was to actually look at rezoning parcels of land. We went back in front of the Wadsworth corridor in particular in November of 2010 and went through a public meeting where we explained the new zoning districts that were on the books and gave people an opportunity to express their interest in possibly considering a legislative rezoning. We generally received positive input, which is why we moved forward. We did mail a survey to property owners to actually give them an opportunity to comment on whether they were interested in a rezoning. And I'll show you the results of that here. There is still one property owner that has indicated that they're not supportive of the rezoning of their property to the new mixed-use commercial district. So you can see on this map, the green areas are parcels that indicated support, that they would like the city to definitely pursue that. The grayish areas are properties that did not respond to our request for any interest. And then that one red parcel at the northeast corner of 44th and Wadsworth has expressed their opposition, and I believe that opposition continues to this day. In terms of the more formal process, that was really an informal process of just outreach to the public. The formal process began in March of this year with a resolution that city council adopted establishing the boundaries of a map for a city-initiated legislative rezoning. That triggered Step 2, which is a neighborhood meeting, which we conducted in April of this year. After that, there was also a planning commission public hearing, and then, of course, this important city council public hearing. Notification to the property owners was provided for both the planning commission and the city council public hearing. The neighborhood meeting was fairly well-attended. As neighborhood meetings go, there were about 30 attendees, generally supportive of the concept of moving forward with this rezoning process. Lots of questions on the future of the corridor when it comes to traffic and transportation more than anything. A lot of concerns expressed about how and when that street might be widened in the future, how pedestrian use of the corridor could be improved. The staff conclusions are really summarized more thoroughly in your report. It's really an analysis of the rezoning criteria that we provided in a more thorough way in your council action form. We do believe there have been significant changes in the area since it was, since the various properties have been rezoned, whether it be the adoption of the urban renewal plan, the Wadsworth corridor plan, which was 2001, or the other corridor planning efforts that Sarah summarized in her presentation. We certainly believe that the proposed change of zone is compatible with the surrounding area. Again, as Sarah summarized in her presentation, we've tried to be very sensitive to the fact that this mixed-use commercial zoning would be applied adjacent to residential properties, and we think we've found some real meaningful ways of making sure that those transitions occur in the proper way. We certainly hope there will be economic benefits with zone change. One of the benefits of the new mixed-use zoning districts, all of them, is that if city council approves this rezoning, that the, by and large, future review process for the properties as they redevelop is administrative. And we think that's hopefully very attractive to the property owners and, you know, potential investors in the corridor, that they have a more certain and a quicker and more predictable process moving forward with the redevelopment. A few additional conclusions. One of the things you look at in analyzing whether a zone change is appropriate is whether the infrastructure can support it. We've had preliminary discussions with all of our utility districts that would service properties in the corridor, and they've indicated a willing, an ability to serve. Certainly with certain development proposals, upgrades would be necessary, and those would be reviewed and analyzed as part of site-specific development proposals. I think most importantly, as you've heard tonight, you know, we think that the adoption of the mixed-use commercial zoning is a real flexible tool and very consistent with the planning that has occurred in the city with a lot of community input over the course of the last five or more years. And with that, we'll open it up for public comments and be glad to entertain questions.
Thanks. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward if you would like to speak on item number one. Please spell your last name for the record and state your address and/or your city.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Michael Smith. My office address is at Jacob's Chase, 1050 17th Street, Suite 1500. I represent Pacific Realty Associates, the red parcel on the map, the sole opposer at this point. We have talked... I have a couple of letters, I believe, are part of the official record. I have copies for you if you'd like to read them. We remain opposed to having our property included in the district. I had a brief conversation with the mayor beforehand, and he indicates that there is a proposed amendment which will allow property owners to withdraw from this zone district if they do so within the first 30 days after it's passed. We're very much in support of that. From our standpoint, and I won't go through all the details that are in the letter, we don't believe that for our property, this is the right way to go. Our property is a significant sales tax generator based on being a big-box store with a need for parking, setbacks, those kinds of things that serve that need. Last year, the property tax revenues off that store alone were more than $200,000, or not property tax, sales tax. We don't have plans to significantly redevelop that property any time in the future. And to the extent that anybody would want to redevelop that property, they would have to acquire the remaining properties that share the same cross easements. Because without those cross easements and eliminating those, you're not going to be able to redevelop our parcel, particularly to do street-front building that would be pedestrian-friendly. So from our standpoint, we would very much appreciate an amendment to the ordinance which would allow us to file a withdrawal of our property from that. We remain opposed. We recognize we're the only property owners that have appeared in opposition throughout this process. My clients are a large real estate investment organization based out of Portland, Oregon, with properties all across the United States. Unfortunately, my client's track record and experience with these kinds of redevelopments has not been particularly positive, and accordingly, would like to not be part of it. So if you would like copies of the letters, I have them for you, but if you've done your good homework as council members and have been through the files... good homework as council members and have been through the files, I won't give you copies.
Go ahead and give them to the city clerk if you'd like.
All right.
Thank you. Please step forward for public comment. Please spell your last name for the record and your city and/or your address.
Again, my name is Lloyd Levy. The last name is spelled L-E-V. Is it Victory-Y? I live at 3275 Uplum Street. And again, I'm a supporting member and volunteer advocate for Wheat Ridge 2020. Counselors, I would like to read a memo to you into the record from our executive director in support of this item, Council Bill 22-2011, as written and without amendment. This is from Britta Fisher, Executive Director of Wheat Ridge 2020. Wheat Ridge 2020 is a nonprofit organization advancing Wheat Ridge as a vibrant and sustainable community. Wheat Ridge 2020 has a strategic goal to pursue opportunities to support commercial and mixed-use development. We believe that mixed-use zoning is a huge step forward in planning for the types of mixed-use development that will benefit our community. This proposed mixed-use zoning is in line with the community's vision, as outlined in Envision Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan. We thank all of our city leadership for this progressive vision for our community. The mixed-use zoning encourages quality redevelopment and will help the city of Wheat Ridge meet its economic development goals. Mixed-use zoning strengthens property values by allowing more uses and more flexibility to the property owner. It also attracts investment, allows for the redevelopment in Envision Wheat Ridge, and promotes economic growth. The mixed-use zoning proposed is a step forward because it creates one consistent zone district for the Wadsworth corridor rather than piecemeal zoning. Therefore, we urge the City Council to approve the mixed-use zoning as proposed for the Wadsworth corridor. And I'd like to close by emphasizing three points. First, the zoning creates development flexibility without harming the existing uses. Second, the people of Wheat Ridge have a vision for this part of Wadsworth, created through public participation and endorsed by you in Envision Wheat Ridge. And finally, comprehensive, not piecemeal zoning is critical to making the vision possible. So please pass the bill as written and open the door to new possibilities on the Wadsworth corridor. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment before we move on? Seeing that, we'll move on to council discussions and questions. City Council, Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a amendment, as Mr. Smith had mentioned. I think this is an important ordinance, and staff has spent a lot of time on it, and I think that, you know, we do have support and we have opposition along Wadsworth, but there is a lot of gray area with a lot of people who haven't responded. And for whatever reason, I would like to make an amendment to the ordinance at this time.
But we haven't -- we're not closed out of the public hearing yet. You can discuss your amendment, but we haven't had a main motion or closed the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I'd like to read it, and this would involve the effective date and also the ability to opt out the property. The ordinance shall take effect 30 days after final publication. This would be an amendment to Section 5 of the ordinance. A property owner may request that his or her property be removed from the area rezoned. The request shall be in writing, described with particularity the property requested to be removed from the area rezoned. We've been told by Mr. Johnstone that there will not be a notice put out about this. This will just be a 30-day option to opt out, so -- and the rest I have written, and I pass that to everybody, and if anybody has any questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Ms. Berry.
I just want to better understand some of the concerns of Mr. Smith, and I understand that, you know, the existing business there is a large, big box and would like to stay that way. From the way -- in the near future, from the way I read this, if this proposed rezoning passes, it doesn't in any way negate any of his existing uses or change that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Another concern in reading the letters, which I did read before the hearing tonight, but I appreciate you bringing the extra copies in case I hadn't, is that there are a lot of private agreements. And I remember being on Planning Commission when we did some additional rezonings or development plans on parcels there, and there were cross-access easements and cross-parking easements and even maybe kind of a master drainage easement that everybody shared. So I know that it's kind of a complicated site in terms of all those private agreements, but this rezoning, if it passes, it doesn't negate any of the private agreements. They'll still stay in place. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. Those are strictly private encumbrances that would be enforced.
So this doesn't in any way take away any of their existing land use rights. It really gives them additional land use rights. Is that correct?
That's certainly the intent, yes. The zoning district allows, you know, a broad array of commercial uses. To the extent that a use would become non-conforming with the new zoning district, it could be kept in place and maintained and even, under certain conditions, expanded.
All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jay.
Ken, if I may ask, when Sarah was going through the conditions of mixed-use commercial, car repair facilities and car sales, I believe, are not allowed, but existing businesses of that type are still allowed. Is that correct?
Yes. They can -- to the extent that a use would become non-conforming as a use under the new zoning, it could be -- remain in place, could be sold, transferred, and again, in certain cases, expanded. The property in question, to my knowledge, doesn't have any outdoor display, so it wouldn't, by my way of thinking, become a non-conforming use. But I think the property owner's representative is certainly aware of that.
Okay. It would go on as non-conforming, but it also could be sold and transferred and et cetera. There seems to be a...
Would not become -- right. It would not become non-conforming.
Oh, I got it. It would become -- not become non-conforming. I got it.
Right. It's essentially a retail use with no outdoor display.
It would remain non-conforming, I think. It may go along as that type of business, is my concern.
It certainly can.
Okay. And as well as it could be sold to another party and still remain being a car repair or car, whatever all it was.
It's car parts.
Car parts, that's what it was, yeah. That use could continue.
Yes. It's a permitted legal use.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments for staff before I close the public hearing and we take a motion? Ms. Adams.
I wanted to review a couple things that we went over, and then there were a few things in the packet. This is for our staff. We had five meetings, is that correct, for this particular -- five notices were sent?
Five notices have been sent over the course of the rezoning process to the property owners advising them of this, of the potential rezoning.
And how many meetings and the attendance at the meetings and stuff?
Well, we've had -- I'd have to reconstruct. We've had an initial meeting in January of 2010. We had a subsequent meeting with Wadsworth Corridor in November of 2010. We had a number of public meetings in actually crafting the new mixed-use districts. We had a neighborhood meeting specific to the Wadsworth corridor, and we had a Planning Commission hearing specific to this rezoning in question.
And that brings me to the next question. The Planning Commission had everyone there except, I believe, one person, and at that point in time, they did unanimously approve to move forward with this, if I'm correct in what I'm reading in my minutes.
They did.
Okay. And then the other question I had was one of the commissioners did state, and I need clarification on this, and I was going to call you today, but I thought I'd just do it here. Commissioner stated that if she would change, or they would have an amendment to this for the particular party that's in question of not desiring this change, that it would not become non-conforming as a result of the rezone. The property owner can stay with his present situation until 2030 or as long as he likes. I guess that goes along with what Mrs. Jay is saying, and where did she get 20 -- or this commissioner get 2030 and as long as she likes? Help me with that.
I'm going to defer to Sarah.
Who was there at the committee?
She was there, yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
My recollection of the reason why the 2030 date came up was because I believe that's when the easements expire that are on the property or some -- the date was mentioned during the testimony of the property owner who was in opposition. There's something specific about that date, so that was why that date was called out. But there is no time limit. I mean, essentially, per the zoning, a non-conforming use could stay as long as it wanted, although I would point out again that this property is not going to become non-conforming. It is a legal use under the zoning, permitted as of right.
Okay. I just -- I guess if the 2030 was in here someplace else, I didn't see it. I just saw it.
You know, I think sometimes some of those details don't make it into the minutes, so I apologize for that confusion.
No, that's fine. That's okay. Okay, now, I have a third question here. Just one minute. Does anybody else have -- if I find my third question? Oh, I've got it. As I read through this, there are two property owners that are local owners that all had -- also had similar concerns, and as well as meeting with the party concerned with this, you were able to discuss with them, and there was an understanding then with these local property owners that they are comfortable with moving forward. So we really only have one property owner that's objecting.
Right. We initially, when we sent out that notice and an opportunity for property owners to say, form an opinion about whether they wanted to be rezoned, we had three that expressed concerns, and we met with two of those, and they removed their objection. They support the...
They do support it at this point. Okay, that's all I have unless I find number four here.
Ms. Langworthy.
I just have to make a small, quick comment. I think during that whole presentation, this little part got overlooked, but for a city that's urban, I think it's very important is that one of the requirements in this new mixed-use commercial district will be an increased amount of open space requirement, whereas before it was 10%, and you guys have increased it to 15%.
No, it's actually a reduction from...
Oh, it's reduction?
From certain of the commercial landscape requirements. But it's a very conscious -- it's a very conscious way of requiring that the open space be of public value and of public use.
Okay.
So that we have quality public spaces that are included as part of properties that would develop under this zoning.
Okay, because I'm reading it says 15% of the net development area must be open space. Mixed use has a 10% open, so I guess I thought that was in it.
So for -- under the mixed-use commercial zoning, if you're a single-use development, you have to have 15% open space or public space that's usable. If you're a mixed-use development, we reduce that as an incentive for people to encourage them to do mixed use. When we drafted the mixed-use zoning districts, we very consciously didn't dictate or mandate that you had to do mixed use. You can do straight residential, you can do straight commercial, but we wanted to find ways to incentivize people to do mixed use, and that was one of the ways that we did that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I think -- going over all this, it's kind of funny because Wadsworth is one of our main commercial business quarters. So why would we not make the effort to entice and to -- not necessarily make larger or whatever, but the commercial-type applications? You know, this adds a tremendous amount of flexibility to what we could do. I think it's a win-win. I think it's a win-win for the property owners. I think it's a win-win for any developer that comes in, and I think it's a win-win for the people of Wheat Ridge, because hopefully, we can entice more business, we can take advantage of land use with what we can do there. If, you know, right now, the big deal is, is, you know, commercial below, residential above, if we can take advantage of that, while the market dictates it, that's super. But this just adds a tremendous amount of flexibility on what we could possibly do on Wadsworth Boulevard. And I think that, you know, if there's one outfit that wants out, you know, whatever, if Joey's got an amendment for it, you know, then that's fine. But there's been an awful lot of meetings on it. They have talked with a lot of the property owners. So far, only one has asked to be out. I think they want to take advantage of what we're offering, and so I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Yes, I just want to say that I also perceive this to be value-added property. However, ultimately, I respect the property owner's right to have their own opinion as to what's in their best interest, and so I'll be supporting the amendment, which allows those property owners who don't view it as I do, to opt out of this circumstance. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 22-2011, as amended, and ordinance approving the comprehensive rezoning of property...
Did we get the amendment done?
Oh, go ahead and read the motion in the packet.
Yeah, we didn't do it, yeah.
And then he'll read the amendment.
Okay. And ordinance -- strike that as amended, and ordinance approving the comprehensive rezoning of property located along the Wadsworth corridor between West 35th and West 45th.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval as stated in the packet, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Mr. Demott.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion. I move to amend Section 5 of the ordinance to read in its entirety as follows. Section 5, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days after final publication, as permitted by Section 511 of the Charter. Prior to said effective date, any owner of real property within the area rezoned described in Section 1 hereof may request that his or her property be removed from the area rezoned. Such requests shall be in writing, shall describe with particularity the property requested to be removed from the area rezoned, shall be signed by all owners of record of said real property, and shall be delivered to the Director of Community Development. Upon receipt of a proper, signed request within the time period specified in this Section 5, said property shall be removed from the area rezoned and shall retain the zone designation applicable to it prior to the passage of this ordinance.
Second.
A motion to amend, as read by Mr. Demott, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the amendment? Ms. Berry.
I won't be supporting the amendment. There's been a lot of long, hard work that's gone into the Wadsworth corridor plan, which started long ago and adopted, I think, in about 2007. Mr. Smith is right in that we have a lot of challenges in developing the Wadsworth plant -- the Wadsworth corridor to mixed use. We had challenges. I don't know why we would add additional challenges by adopting maybe a patchwork of properties along Wadsworth corridor, which would make this plan and would make mixed use not work at all. We've had five notices to property owners... We've had five notices to property owners. We've had many meetings, and we have one property owner who is against. And looking at his letters, and I've looked at those in detail, many of the issues he addresses are general concepts about mixed use and where they work and where they don't work. But what we're doing here gives him additional rights on the property. It doesn't take away any existing rights. Many of the things that I've heard from the community about a lot of the plans we've been doing over the last few years is that we get to a point, and we don't take the hard steps and the difficult steps sometimes to make these plans, to implement these plans and to set ourselves up for success. I believe we've had a long, thorough public involvement process. I think that this is a good plan. I agree with Mr. Stites that this helps set us forward. It gives us choices. It doesn't diminish his existing property rights, and I think we need to take the hard step and implement this plan now and adopt all the properties that are zoned, are shown on the map, and rezone them to mixed use, as was we committed to doing in the Wadsworth corridor plan.
Ms. Adams?
I too agree with Mr. Stites and also the process that we have taken, and with respect to the Planning Commission and the additional rights that this will allow the owners along Wadsworth Boulevard, and also with the community having had calls, not on this particular item, but on other items, which is, in general, you go so far and then you pull back. And I feel at this time, it's time to move ahead with the Wadsworth corridor, and I feel that it is absolutely pertinent that we not choke at this point, but that there are rights here, but in the same regard, we are allowing this particular person and everyone on Wadsworth and all of our community members to move forward. So I will not be supporting the amendment. I will support the main motion.
Any other comments on the amendment as read by Mr. Demott? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I would, you know, the city, we've initiated this, and I don't want to force it on anybody. I think it will enhance them, the property owners, developers, right on down the line. I have, you know, your normal waiting time would be 15 days. I, you know, Joey's just added 15 more days, 30 days, I think out of common courtesy, in case one of the property owners or whatever's been stuck on the moon for the last year and a half and doesn't know what's going on. So I really have no problem with, you know, adding an extra 15 days, just to, just to be fair about the process.
Any other comments?
I do appreciate Mr. Demott's consideration of the property owners, and as much as I would love to not, to keep the whole area intact, and I am concerned about others coming up, but I appreciate that, the right of those property owners to dictate what they want done with their property. So I will be supporting Joey's amendment, or Mr. Demott's amendment.
Any more comments or questions before we poll the council on the amendment? Please poll the council on the amendment.
And that motion carries six to two with Mrs. Adams and Ms. Berry voting no.
Thank you. We have the main motion as amended. Please poll the council on the main motion as amended.
And that motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We move on to Item 1A, which is added at the beginning of the agenda, Council Bill Number 15-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I move to table indefinitely Council Bill Number 15-2011, an ordinance temporarily waiving two cents of the city's sales tax within the boundaries of the Longspreek Metropolitan District.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to indefinitely postpone for Item 1A. It was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the postponement? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item 2, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to award ITB 1130 Discovery Park Phase 3 contract to Colorado Designscape Centennial Colorado in the amount of $461,195.65 for the purpose of park construction. Discovery Park was designed to be built in three phases. Phase 1 and 2 were completed in October of 2010. This contract award is for the construction of Phase 3, which completes the remaining components of the adopted park master plan. The scope of the work for this contract award includes installation of a prefab restroom structure, entry gateways, climbing wall at playground, concrete flatwork, grading, grading and drainage at the skate park plaza, shade shelter located at the skate park, and additional trees, landscaping, and irrigation. On June 29, 2011, four bids were received. These bids were evaluated based on qualifications, experience, and pricing. Staff recommends award to Colorado Designscape Centennial Colorado in the amount of $461,195.65. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve award ITB 1130 Discovery Park Phase 3 contract to Colorado Designscape Centennial Colorado in the amount of $461,195.65 for the purpose of park construction. I further move to award a contingency in the amount of $46,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Discussion on the main motion?
I'd just like to make a quick, I would like to thank Joyce Manwaring. She, the water feature wasn't going to get put in till much later and, after the prime summertime, and I understand it's being used frequently already, so I do appreciate that that's in there, because I've had a lot of people ask me about that, that portion of the park.
Thank you. Please, any discussion on the item number 2? Please poll the council on item 2.
And that motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 3, Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 3 is a motion to approve payment of the sales tax increment for the first six months of fiscal year 2011 from the Town Center project in the amount of $94,469.24 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. The city entered into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority in June 2006 to establish the rights and responsibilities of the city and the authority with respect to operational assistance and the sales tax, sales tax increment applicable to the Wheat Ridge Town Center. The IGA was amended in October 2007. The IGA stipulates that the city will share the authority, with the authority, 50% of the sales tax increment from the Wheat Ridge Town Center project until December 31, 2014. The increment is traditionally distributed to the authority at the end of the fiscal year. However, this, as the authority proceeds with the development of the Town Center North Project of Port Worth and Wadsworth, the authority is requesting a distribution of sales tax increment for the first six months of fiscal year 2011 in the amount of $94,469.24 to increase the authority's available funding for project development cost. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment of the sales tax increment for the first six months of fiscal year 2011 from the Town Center Park Project in the amount of $94,469.24 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item 3, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion on item 3? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 4, Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to award RFB 1105 herbicide applications, non-turf contract to Vegetation Management Incorporated Evergreen Colorado in the amount of $21,509.10. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award RFB 1105 herbicide applications, non-turf contract to Vegetation Management Incorporated Evergreen Colorado in the amount of $21,509.10 for the year 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on item 4? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 5 is Resolution 21-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 21-2011, a resolution approving a contract with the city and county of Denver for a waterline easement at 37th Place and Miller Court. The Denver Water Board constructed a waterline in West Wheat Ridge in 2007. While most of the construction occurred in the street rights of way, the waterline crossed a residential lot owned by the city at West 37th Place and Miller Court. Denver has requested a utility easement in this location. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-2011, thereby granting a waterline easement to the city and county of Denver.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 6, Councilmember Adams.
Joan Eiler to Cultural Commission, representing District 3, term to expire March 2, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item 6, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the Cultural Commission? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Who has the item 7, motion for executive session? Ms. Sang?
I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city manager and city attorney under Charter Section 5.7b2 and Section 24-4-4024F-CRS, specifically the annual evaluation of the city manager. I further move to reconvene the council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session to take any actions deemed necessary.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to go into executive session. It was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll be meeting in the glass conference room.